MNN in partnership with League of Women Voters of the City of New York presents Race to Represent: Multimedia Coverage of Manhattan Elections, Council District 8 Debate.
Hello. The League of Women Voters of the City of New York and the Manhattan Neighborhood Network are pleased to bring you a debate among the candidates running in the Democratic primary on September 10 in Council District 8. The winner of the primary will be the Democratic nominee for that seat in November's election. I'm Alice Bloom, and I'll be your moderator today for the League of Women Voters. All the candidates will be running in the new council districts that were drawn by the New York City Redistricting Commission following the results of the 2010 census. Each district represents approximately 168,000 residents. The candidates are seated in the order of their closing statements. We have many League-prepared questions for them, and we'll allow them one and a half minutes to respond to the first question, and one-minute answers to the remaining questions, with the intent of covering lots of issues. I have some discretion to allow rebuttals, but I remind the candidates that they'll each have a one-minute closing statement to address any issues that they like. Let me begin by introducing the candidates. First, ahead of me, Melissa Marc-Viverito, incumbent in old District 8. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you. Ed Santos, Gwen Goodwin, Ralina Cardona, and Reverend Shawn Gardner. Welcome to you all, and thank you for being here. So, without further ado, are we ready to start?
Yes.
Okay. First question. This is one that I know you all have opinions about. Affordable housing is rare in Manhattan. What can the city council do to preserve and expand the number of affordable housing units? Give you all a moment to think about it. We're going to start in the same order in which we're going to close, so we're going to start with Ms. Marc Viverito.
Well, Alice, first of all, I want to thank you for moderating tonight, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Manhattan Neighborhood Network for putting this debate together, and I really want to take and thank the viewers that are taking the time to view this debate and really learn about the candidates. I'm very proud to be the current council member, serving two terms, and I look forward to earn your support to continue to do the great work that we've been doing on behalf of the working families in the City of New York, and in District 8 in particular. With regards to affordable housing, obviously, we have an incredible crisis, and there's a lot that the city council can do, but clearly, we need a strong partner in the mayor in terms of really committing to aggressively preserving units and the creation of new units. The other thing that we also have to safeguard is our existing public housing stock. District 8, the current configuration and the new configuration, will have the most public housing in the City of New York. That is the cornerstone of affordable housing in this city, and we must do everything to safeguard it, and we can't say it's a responsibility of the federal government. We, as a city council, can invest and safeguard and continue to preserve those units which are vital. We have land use oversight as a city council, and working in partnership with HPD, we can look at creating affordable housing that is truly affordable to the constituents in our district, and I've done that in the eight years that I've been council member. I will continue to be a leader on that front, and it is the most important priority on my agenda.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Santos.
Well, of course, you know, affordable housing is one of the most important aspects of the community. We have the highest amount of public housing stock in the United States, let alone New York City. So, it's very important that we have affordable housing for the people of our community. Affordable housing means a lot of different things for people, but for me, it means that 30% of someone's income goes to housing, and that's something that can be affordable to everyone. Unfortunately, when we look at housing across East Harlem, housing across Mont Haven in the South Bronx, we don't have that affordability. You know, I remember when I was growing up, my mom was a nanny in the city, my dad was a waiter, and we had so much trouble trying to pay for rent, trying to make sure that we had food on the table, and so I know personally what it means for families all across the United States.
Can we just interrupt you for just one second, because the question really is, what could you do to expand the number of affordable units?
Sure. Well, you know, it's about pushing for things that are important, right? Pushing for 80-20 developments, pushing for more co-ops and Mitchell-Lama developments. I think all of these are key and specific issues that we can push on city council to make sure that we have more affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Goodwin.
Yes. Well, I think housing is the most important issue here in New York City, and I first want to point out that I think, at least in East Harlem right now, the most important issue in this election is the infill proposal, and that is where we're looking at building luxury high-rises on the land surrounding the New York City housing projects. I am 100% against that, and if I get into city council, I am going to do everything I can to obstruct that, because I truly believe that if we allow those high-rises to come in, that we're going to see a shift in the population in East Harlem and Mont Haven, as well as the Bronx, indeed everywhere in the city. So, it's very, very important to safeguard the residents that live in our public housing all over this city. We have an obligation to do that. The second thing I want to talk about when it comes to affordable housing is, I believe we've had the recipe for a long time. It's called rent stabilization, and I believe that we need to put a moratorium on the luxury high-rises that have infected East Harlem and have been put up all over the city and has made it so hard for regular citizens, regular working-class citizens, to be able to stay living here in New York City. I believe the people that work in New York City also should be able to live in New York City. I think it's just as important for the man who's collecting the trash as Donald Trump to be able to live here. So, I think that we have an inequity with our housing right now, especially in East Harlem. We've been gentrified over the last eight years at an accelerated pace. We've seen the rezoning of 125th Street, which brings in more and more high-rises, more and more shift in a population, and I think that what we need to do is we need to stabilize the situation for all people. And I just want to also add, very, very important to do something about the senior citizens' housing as well, because we find that people are getting into their senior years, and because they're going on to Social Security, they can't pay market rent, and some of them are making too much on that to come into affordable housing. So, we've got to do something with that gap to close it up.
Thank you. You've covered a lot of ground. Okay, Ms. Cardona.
I also would like to thank the League for having me here, and also Manhattan Network. First of all, we have to define what's affordable, because that also seems to change when we do start new developments. Someone that makes $50,000, $60,000 sometimes is not affordable in our community, so we really need to look at the community that we will be serving. I also happen to be born and raised in the shadows of three major public housing developments within one block. I literally can go outside and see three major public housing developments, and I think it is very important, no question, we need to safeguard our public housing, but if we are going to take it to the next step, why not offer those that are living there the possibility of homeownership? We do understand what it is to own something. When you own it, you take on responsibility, you take better care of it, and if someone feels that they are a part of the system and not just being used by the system, you could take much, much better homeownership on it, and this is going to be one of the largest concentrations of public housing in one of the council districts. So, we really need to look at that stock, but we also definitely have to define what's affordable. So, when a developer does want to come into our community, we have to make sure that our people will be able to afford it, not just be moved out for another group of people to come in and move into our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Reverend Gardner.
First of all, let me thank the League of Women Voters, as well as MNN, for this opportunity of sharing with you today. I believe, as a pastor, a sitting pastor, 20 years in the East Harlem community, let alone being born and raised in East Harlem, El Barrio, I find it quite distasteful with where the housing experience is actually going now. Many people are hurting, they're suffering. I like to use the motto, the church that I pastor, which is East Ward, I like to say at the rate we're going, we're taking East Ward and East River and East View, and we're pushing it all into the East River, and I have a serious problem with that. I believe that as a council member, we'll work hard and aggressively to hold true to those things that we've established within this city as it relates to public housing and those who are affordable housing, I'll say. Co-ops and condos are wonderful, and, believe me, I think they are needed and necessary, but I'd like to make sure that the middle class are taken care of.
Okay. So, you basically want to keep these things in the realm of the middle class?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, that was a good warm-up question. I think we all believe that we need more housing, right, for people to live here. Okay, let's have more fun. The next question, from here on in, you're going to have a minute to answer, and we're going to go in opposite order. Reverend Gardner, you're going to be first, and then we're going to proceed to your right. The city council receives approximately $50 million in discretionary and member item funding for the 51 districts. What is your position on how this funding is allocated, and who determines how the money should be used? Reverend Gardner, first.
$51 million?
That's right.
Wow. Very interesting.
$50 million.
$50?
In 51 districts.
Okay.
$50 million, a nice chunk of change.
Yes. I personally believe, again, not being a city council member and not really aware of that and knowing that, I would feel insulted that that money wouldn't be used or allocated, being used in the community where we are. There are many people who are in our communities, or in District 8, I'll say, where that money has been allocated that have not been used, or has been used in specific groups in particular, and I think, for the most part, it should be shared abroad. There are different ethnic backgrounds and ethnic groups that are within District 8, and each one of them should be able to receive a piece of the pie.
Okay. All right. Well, a little bit of surprise here, that there's that much money at stake. Okay, Ms. Cardona.
I work in the community, and we all know, I'm sure, many grassroots organizations that do great work without a dollar. So, imagine if we were to share that. Some of these grassroots organizations that I work with, $5,000 is $1 million, and they could do so much with that. So, I think it really is identifying the groups on the ground that get the most critical impact, you know, the biggest bang for their buck in the community itself, be it from seniors to youth, and we really need to make sure that the wealth is spread around within the district itself, and that would be identifying the small grassroots organization that usually do work without a penny, and letting them know, we're here, and these are also your dollars, because many times, the bigger, bigger organizations, $5,000, $10,000, they don't even see how much that could help them. That could be going towards some of their rent, as we know in New York City, but a small mom-and-pop organization that does the work on the weekends and the evenings, $5,000, $10,000 could be an immense amount of money that could help the community.
Right. I think we're all a little surprised at how much money is at stake here, and how little we know about how it's spent. Ms. Goodwin.
Exactly. I have to say that the current discretionary process is extremely troubling to me. We literally see people, in my district, for example, the school that I save, PS 109, the developer was given twice $1 million, and over the nine years that he had that money, nothing happened to the building that he was supposed to be sight overseeing. This is very, very upsetting. The thing that is the most upsetting is that you cannot find out how the money gets spent after it gets given out. So, I think that the city council has an obligation that is not, right now, currently transparent. You can't see where the money goes after it gets given away. We need to have something developed so that people can go on the computer and track the money to see what happens after that money gets given away, because $5 million is a lot of money. I also feel that there currently is, there is an allocation or a development now where citizens can be more involved in where the money goes. So, I think that we should also have a process of voting on where the money's going to go, because I don't think it's very democratic for one person to be overseeing this much money and basically give it to those who were beholden to that individual and starve those who were not beholden to that money.
So, if by one person, you mean the speaker?
Actually, I'm being specific to the city council person, because in my own district, I have been speaking to many people, and I hear that some organizations were literally starved, where some were given free rein to as much money as, well, as they could get. And, you know, the most important thing, or the most startling case to me, is where, you know, a developer gets $2 million to overview a project and doesn't do anything with it, just disappears, and the land sits empty with trash and decay all over it. That's very, very upsetting.
Thank you. Mr. Santos.
Sure. Well, I think it's important that we allocate money to our most vulnerable people, and so when I think about allocations, I would think about making sure that we're looking at our community first, whether we have the most neediest, whether we have those who need the most help. I think the money should go to where the best use of our funds would be. Unfortunately, we've had eight years of funding that hasn't been overseen in the right ways. You know, while Melissa's going to talk about participatory budgeting, which I think is amazing and does great things, I think not enough has been done in participatory budgeting in our area. No one knew about it, and so it's an opportunity for bigger organizations to be able to come in and say, you know, we're going to coalesce a group of people, but what about those small organizations, those small mom-and-pop nonprofits that are never going to win participatory budgeting? I think that we, you know, a city council person has to be a leader in providing those funds to our small mom-and-pop nonprofits, and they're going to be the ones that are going to get the help from our leaders.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Santos. Ms. Marc Viverito.
The discretionary money that the city council has available is taxpayer dollars, and we, as council members, have the ability to redirect and reinvest our taxpayer dollars into our districts. I am one of the pioneers, and I'm glad that it's been recognized as a really great model by some of the opponents here in the room. I am one of the pioneer council members in the City of New York with participatory budgeting, and now, there's eight council members out of the 51 that are engaged in a process where we're allowing our constituents to have a say, to be part of the conversation, to decide what projects they would like to see their taxpayer dollars reinvested in, what kind of projects they would like to see happen and flourish in their neighborhood. That is the model and the leadership and the type of innovative, creative leadership that I bring to the table in working with my colleagues. The discretionary allocations we have available as council members need to be safeguarded. It's all about process, it's all about how that process and how those monies are distributed, and our organizations in East Harlem and District 8 and in Mont Haven in the Bronx have greatly benefited from those taxpayer dollars, and we are very proud of the level of support and the kind of services that those dollars continue to provide to our constituents.
Thank you. Very good. Okay. Next question, I think we'll start with Mr. Santos. We'll give you a chance to be number one. Okay. What is your position on the proposed reopening of the East 91st Street Waste Transfer Station?
Sure. Well, you know what? I think that we should be focusing on borough equity. It's important that, especially in our district, we have the highest amounts of public health issues, whether it's asthma or obesity. We cannot keep having the burden of additional cars and trucks that are coming into the South Bronx, and so it's important that we make sure that we are allocating these resources in different ways. You know, I was a public school teacher, and I remember students having issues with asthma, and it could be prevented if we allocated things in a different way, if we were able to provide better transportation, focus on our public health issues that we have. So, you know, I think the station itself... It can't be in our neighborhood. It can't be in our, for the people that we present, it just cannot be in there.
Okay. Thank you. I should have told you, I'm going to proceed to your right, Ms. Marc Viverito.
I've been completely in favor of the solid waste management plan that the city council has voted in favor of, which provides for borough equity, and I have been in total agreement with the 91st Street Marine Transfer Station, and I believe that when we look at communities like the one that I live in, the one that I represent, when we talk about environmental injustice, where you have the sighting of these waste facilities that have been congregated and concentrated in particular neighborhoods, in the South Bronx, for instance, you've got 12 waste transfer stations in one neighborhood, where you have public schools and people that live. Borough equity is critical. Manhattan does not have any waste transfer station facility, so it's imperative that we support that, and I've taken on the interests that have gone against me personally. I've sent mailings throughout my district against me because I support that plan, people that are vested in real estate interest on the Upper East Side and trying to use public housing residents as a way of trying to say that the transfer station should not be happening in the Upper East Side. So, I'm very supportive of it. It has to happen, and I've never retreated from that position.
Thank you. Reverend Gardner.
Yes. I personally disagree with the fact of the station being in the community within itself, and I take it I stand with at least a few of the candidates that are here in regards to the fact that asthma is at an all-time high. My sister had asthma, and she's been dealing with it over, you know, some years, and there are a number of people who are within our congregation who have asthma. Not only asthma, of course, there's HIV, and the list goes on and on and on. If we're going to put these stations just within the community where we are, what about all the other communities? There are communities that are being excluded. As a matter of fact, if you ride down 96th Street, ride down the FDR Drive now, not only did they stop that waste station from being, they are actually ripping it up and tearing it apart, and I think it's an insult that we ought to be able to share it. If it's our garbage, it's all of our garbage. We ought to be able to find some initiatives to help to make it better, not just push it into the slum hoods or the low neighborhoods, or the neighborhoods that are perhaps not looked at or looked at as others. So, I have a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cardona.
Well, obviously, we all are in agreement as far as, you know, when we try to share the wealth in the city, but we're going to have to be able to share the garbage, too. And it's just ironic, because I know this has gone, this has been on the table for many years, and it just goes to show you, the community that's fighting it can keep it in limbo this long. If it were in the South Bronx that it was decided, it would have been built. It would have been done. If it were in East Harlem, it would have been done. So, you know, that just goes to show that the next council person really has to be a fighter for the people and for the community until we can get the rest of the district involved and make sure that when anything tries to come in our backyard, we can stop it for years to come, the way they have been for the last couple of years in this 91st Street. But, you know, I'm definitely in agreement. It has to be borough equity, and we have to stop it, not even to say that we're still not going to get, it's only a few blocks away. Not that we're going to still get some of the health ills, but at least we start sharing it.
Thank you. Ms. Goodwin.
Yeah. In 1999, they came back and rebuilt the 100th Street Bus Depot, and I initiated the lawsuit against the MTA for environmental racism, because at that time, we had six out of, excuse me, seven out of eight bus depots in Harlem and East Harlem. Today, I think we have eight out of eight bus depots in Harlem and East Harlem. We also have the highest asthma record in the United States. So, I clearly understand it. I understood it back in 1999. I've been fighting these environmental issues for many years. As far as equity is concerned, I do agree, and I've said this to my friends on the Upper East Side. It's not really fair that you think everything should be in our neighborhood, as well as the Bronx and these poor neighborhoods. I think that it is a good idea to distribute these centers all through the island, although I think it's a better idea to try to resolve these issues in a more environmentally sound way. I don't like the arguments of NIMBY, not in my backyard, without exploring other ways of handling crises like this. So, I do support the waste station being at 91st Street instead of in East Harlem, because I don't think we can take on anything more, but I do think we should explore other remedies to figure out these problems.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's mix it up a little bit. Ms. Cardona, we're going to start with you on the next question and proceed to your right. This is very complicated for me to keep track of, but I'm told that it's much more interesting for our viewers. The Democratic candidates for mayor have proposed modifying mayoral control of the schools. What changes, if any, would you like to see? Do you have a position on putting charter schools in the same buildings with traditional public schools? Big question.
Well, one of the first major changes I would see, we need to get our parents back involved 1,000%. That needs to be the strongest voice within our educational system. Of course, we're going to have the procurement, we're going to have the people, you know, purchasing the book, running the business of the school, but we do need our parent involvement. They are the ones that, you know, go home and deal with our children on a daily, and then, obviously, everyone should be at the table. The teachers need to be at the table, the parents need to be at the table, and, once again, in our district, we need to make sure that even, we should have our hospitals, because one of the biggest issues we have in our district is back to the asthma. Our children aren't going to school because they are sick, because they have the other ills of the community that stop the education. So, parent involvement, I think, is huge at this point, and that should be one of the biggest change, where we definitely add the parent involvement.
So, you want to limit mayoral control?
I do, and I would love the parents to be more involved in the decision-making of our day-to-day schoolwork. Does the mayor need to be involved at some point? Of course, to a point. It's our books, it's the procurement of the whole entire, it's the buildings. There's no question, there's a business side of it, but as far as the education of our children, the parents need to have a much larger say.
Very good. Ms. Goodwin, thank you.
I'm the chair for the Coalition to Save PS 109. I was successful at stopping the illegal demolition of PS 109 in 1999. I went on to Land Market, and I made the Board of Ed put the roof back on. It cost $5 million. I worked for the following 12 years to turn it back into a public school. Unfortunately, I lost out on that, and it's going to turn into quasi-housing. So, that said, I care a great deal about public schools. I do not think this mayor has done a good job supervising our public schools, and I really don't think it's a good idea to give the mayor full control of our public schools. I would like to go, I also want to say that I'm pretty much opposed to charter schools. I understand the need for parents to have, the immediate need for parents to be able to send their kids to a better school, but, you know, we've created a two-tiered school system now, and now, we're competing for the same bucket of money, and it's created a very hostile environment, and I believe that what we need to do is we need to have great schools all over the city. We shouldn't have bad schools and good schools. We should have great schools all over the city, and we should demand the same greatness in East Harlem as they have on the Upper East Side. That is the way we should be operating with that money. We should not be turning it into these charter schools, because charter schools, frankly, to me, they're just private schools. Anytime you get to pick who goes into the school, I have a problem with that. Public schools are a wonderful thing, and they're still free and open to all of the public today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Santos.
Great. Well, of course, when you think about mayoral control, I think it's important to think about the fact that mayoral control can make changes happen faster, and while I don't see mayoral control being any stronger than it is now, I think it's important, even more important, to not have a bunch of politicians talking together about what they think is the best new idea. I think we need to have educators in the room, making sure that, you know, that the right things are happening. As a public school teacher, I was in an area where we had colocation happening, colocation of multiple schools, and we were able to work through it and make sure that we shared resources, we were able to share the spaces that we had, and so I think that colocation can be a very positive thing, and it's happened in my classroom, where I've gotten other teachers from other schools come in and view my classroom and see what I've been doing. And so, I don't believe that colocation can all be bad. I think we have to look at it at a very individualized level. Sometimes, there could be situations where colocation is great, sometimes it may not be, so I think for me, you know, colocation is a very, very specific opportunity for each one.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Santos. Ms. Marc Viverito.
Mayoral control, to a certain extent, is important, but there has to be more parent participation, and also, when it comes to the panel for educational policy, you can't have the mayor appointing all of the members of the panel. There has to be a greater balance, and I think there's a role for the city council to play in this. Also, we have a mayor whose administration is based on the disinvestment of public schools, and that is a real problem. School closures become a priority, starting to pit charter schools against the public schools, English-language learners and special-ed students being completely set aside and not given a priority or importance. Those are problems. With regards to charter schools, there's a big difference for me between an organically grown, community-based charter school that comes from, like in East Harlem, where you have two organizations that have been around for over 20 years, that are from the neighborhood, know the neighborhood, work with our children, and decide to open a charter school, versus a franchise model that has absolutely no connection to the community, that has no interest in involving parents, and then you start sharing space, a limited space. So, that, I have a problem with the colocations. The community-based charter schools are growing their own spaces so that they're not challenging and competing against public schools for space. That's the kind of support I will continue to lend, is for that kind of educational model, and go against a model that has disinvested in our public school system.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Although I agree with the mayor's control over schools... Although I agree with the mayor's control over schools, and I understand why as relates to maybe a level of accountability, I do believe that the students are losing. The students are losing or they are not being as effective in the learning areas that they should. In other words, there's no participation from the families, there's no participation from the parents. And as a result, it's really, it's really, it's not a nice situation. Let me say it that way. Our children are distracted, they're not involved in the learning process, and as a result of it, they're spending time in the gyms and out in the streets over against...
So you tie mayoral control to lack of parental involvement?
Well, no, I was breaking it down in the sense of saying, I agree with it in understanding that mayoral control is someone that holds accountability. That's where I was going. There must be a level of accountability. And the prior Board of Education, as it was, there were a lot of people, but there was no accountability. And now, the mayor or the mayor's office would hold accountability. But it's more than just that. It should be the educators that are actually involved. It should be the parents that are involved.
We've exhausted the time, but I do want to know how you feel about charter schools.
Charter schools, I, I'm a product of public schools. And so I stand with public schools.
So you don't think the charter schools belong there?
No, I'm not in agreement with charter schools.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, here's a question that's gotten lots and lots of play, certainly in the mayoral race, and I'm very eager to see how you feel about it. And I think we'll start with Ms. Goodwin and proceed to your left this time. This is very confusing for me. Okay. There may be a change in the stop and frisk policy. What else would you do to make our streets and neighborhoods safer?
Well, I'm glad there's going to be a change in the stop and frisk because it's so utterly unequal when it comes to incidents in our neighborhood for people of color. I would also like to see an inspector general come in to oversee the police because I do think that we've just had too many cases where the police have been, become over violent, they've killed people, and it happens in districts like mine all the time, routinely. So I do think we need an overseer there. And I'm going to turn it back to the police. Look, if you have nothing to be guilty of, then don't worry about it, somebody's watching out for you because if you're doing your job the right way, then nobody's going to find out that you did anything wrong. But I think that in neighborhoods like East Harlem and the Bronx and Mott Haven, we really need to have somebody overseeing the police. As far as, as far as crime itself, crime is a big ball to solve. It's very, very, it's very complicated. And I think that what we need to do is to continue to try to get that graduation level up. We have a 75% dropout level in East Harlem, 86% of our schools are overcrowded. And I think that because kids are leaving school earlier and earlier, that they're just hitting the streets. And of course, they're not trained, so they can't get jobs. So they're doing the next best thing to get money and that they're getting involved in criminal behavior. But I also think we need to work very, very much with the men and women that are coming out of prison. We need to make sure that they have a place to come into. And maybe they could even be mentoring to those that may be thinking about getting involved in life of crime.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cardona, stop and frisk, how would you change this policy? What would you like to see?
What I would like to see, and this might sound very futuristic, but I think what we find is that in our communities, a lot of the time, someone knows who did what. Someone knows the person or knows the person that knows the person. Someone knows who did what. And I think we need to re-educate the community. From a very early age, if you tell on someone, you're a tattletale. But yet, when you're an adult, we have all these 800 numbers, please tell, please tell. You know, as you get older, you're a rat. We need to re-educate the community to say, this is our community, we need to take it back. And if you know something, please say something and report something. Because a lot of the times, very few people come from outside of our community to commit those crimes in our community. For the most part, it is someone that knows someone. And we need to re-educate the community and especially our young kids in saying that it's okay to tell because you're protecting your community, you could be protecting your grandma, you could be protecting your mom. So we need to start creating, re-educating our young people in making sure that if you see something, say something, not just the terrorist side of it. But if you do see a crime, please do not be afraid to come up and make that an area. And that in itself will lower the crime.
Thank you. Very interesting. Reverend Gardner, how would you modify this?
Although stop question and frisk is a very powerful tool that the police department uses, not just here in New York City, but I believe throughout the country. I believe it can be tweaked. I believe there can be a working relationship as relates to the community and the police coming together to build a better understanding as relates to what stop question and frisk is. A number of my constituents, and me being a black man, can understand of being stopped. We call it driving while black. I have been, I continue to be. My grandchildren are, my sons, and the list goes on and on. We like to say, if you have nothing, if you have, if you are not doing anything, well then what's wrong with someone stopping you? But the flip side of that is many people feel that that's harassment. So we need to talk about it and we need to work through it. I do like to say this, I love our communities, I thank God for our communities, but at the end of the day, I wouldn't want to take the police out of our communities. So we need to, the community and the police need to work together.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Mark Viverito.
I'm very proud of the leadership role that I've taken on this issue of stop question and frisk and the negative impact that that policy, the way it's currently being implemented, is treating members of our community. And in order for us to have a safe city and a safe community, we need true and equal partnership with every member of our community. This is not about protecting one sector of our society in our city against another. This is about true partnership as a way of doing effective policing. The way stop question and frisk is being implemented, it is alienating. As we say in Spanish, enajenando, large sectors of our society, particularly our youth, where they don't want to collaborate with the police, where we don't have, when we have a fractured relationship. So I'm a proud sponsor of the Community Safety Act. I have personally challenged Commissioner Kelly multiple times at budget hearings personally on this issue, the fact that we cannot have young people, particularly Latinos and African-Americans, young men feeling that they are outcasts, feeling that the rite of passage for being a young black, Latino, young man in the city is having to go through a stop question and frisk when you've done nothing wrong. This has to change. It will probably be found unconstitutional by the federal courts. We're waiting for the decision and federal intervention will be asked. So this policy needs to change. That is the way we will bring true community policing back to our neighborhoods, but we will bring safety back to our neighborhood as well as by eliminating or at least seriously reforming this practice.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Santos.
Sure. Well, you know, stop question and frisk marginalizes our youth, especially in our minority communities. And so I'm against as it stands now. You know, but that has been passed and the question was, how do we create safer streets? And so we have to think past stop and frisk. It's about cleaner streets, making sure that we have lights that are working. You can't just have, you can't just focus on stop and frisk as the only means to solve crime in our area. It's about getting better education. We have 17% unemployment rate for the past eight years. That hasn't been changed. When more people are not finding work, more people lead to a life of crime. So these are the things that we have to be working on. We have to focus on the root causes of crime that are happening in our community and create solutions to make that happen. So whether that's through education and working with the police force, whether that's creating an infrastructure in our community that has brighter lights and better transportation, these are the things that change communities and these are the things that we need to change to make sure that we have safer streets in our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm feeling like we're going to be pressed for time, but we'll try to get one more question and we'll all have a chance to answer. I think we'll start with Reverend Gardner on this one and proceed to your right. I'm getting dizzy. Okay. Whoever wins the primary election for city council District 8 will be representing approximately 168,000 residents. Do you know what your future constituents want you to work on first? Reverend Gardner.
Yes, very interesting. Yes. I would believe bringing unity back into the community. There are, though, there are a diverse group of people who live in District 8 and the district is changing in a great way. Just coming together, learning to understand and to appreciate each other, each other's concerns, know the things that are actually happening and what we can do to make it better. It's going to take the community to turn things around. It's going to take the community and the police, and it's going to take the firefighters, it'll take the teachers, all of us working together, you know, one common goal, and that's making a stronger community so that at the end of the day, instead of us being last, we can be first.
Very good. Thank you, Reverend Gardner. Ms. Cardona.
Well, the way the lines have been drawn, it is really a 50/50 district now. In the past, the previous District 8, it was just a small slither of Mott Haven section. And I think bringing the district together in itself is going to be very important. And also, I think that because of the housing that we were discussing before, being in the South Bronx, being in East Harlem, we are seeing a very, very large influx of new people coming in, a lot of high luxury, a lot of loft building. And it's almost two neighborhoods because it is a dense concentration of public housing. And walking through the community, speaking to people, you literally see two neighborhoods. Your neighbor is not just the person, if you're in 5A, your neighbor's not just 5B. Your neighbor has to be the person that lives in that high luxury housing. And how do we connect those two communities? And that's going to, that's what will grow this district and make it stronger. Because right now, as long as you keep the super rich from the super poor, it's going to be a very, very hard community to grow.
Thank you. Ms. Goodwin.
I think that I'm more interested in stabilizing our community housing. As I said, my most important issue is the proposal, the infill proposal. And what I would like to do is to make sure that the residents that are living in the New York City housing projects are safe from being displaced. That is my number one issue. And that is the number one issue I hear. I go out with my people when we go to petition and I talk to the people. And this is something that is very, very upsetting and for the residents that live in East Harlem and of course, Mott Haven in the Bronx because we have the largest concentration of public housing in the United States. So this is going to be my number one issue. However, housing keeps coming up over and over again. It's not just about what's going on with the New York City housing projects. It's also about rent stabilization. It's also about people, the baby boomers generation getting older and not being able to make the new rents, which are so high, and not being qualified to get into the low-income housing. So I think that the first thing I want to do in East Harlem is stabilize it. And I especially want to stabilize it for the residents. I'm a resident of East Harlem for 28 years. So, you know, I think the people that are coming in now, really, a lot of the people that are coming in are in a much better situation than the people that have been living there for years. So my most important thing is to listen to the people in our public housing projects and make sure they're served.
Stabilization, I hear you.
Stabilize.
Stabilize, very good. Thank you, Mr. Santos.
Yeah. Well, look, we have eight years of 17% unemployment. We have 90% of our students not college-ready. We have the highest crime rates in Manhattan and the Bronx. And so we need to change all of these things. But for me, it's cyclical cycles of all of these bad things that are happening, and the root of it is education. If we can get our students to not get, not drop out, we'll have less unemployment.
So is that's what your future constituents want you to do?
Yes.
That's the question.
Yes. I would have, education is the most important aspect to lift communities up, whether that be, you know, now or tomorrow. So it's, again, a cycle. It's the more education that we have, the less crime that we have, the less unemployment, and the more business opportunity or business development that we have in our community.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Mark Viverito. What do you think your constituents want?
It continues to be housing and jobs. And when we talk about the greatest inequity in this country in terms of income inequality is in New York City. We have a vast gap between those that have and those that don't. That is making living in New York City almost unbearable for people that have been born and raised here, that toil day in and day out, that have raised their families. And when you talk about jobs, we've got to leverage the power of New York City to create quality jobs. You know, not low-income, minimum wage jobs with no benefits. That's what this administration has proposed, using subsidies to subsidize large corporations and developments that all they provide are low-level wages and no benefits. We need to really tackle those two fronts to really deal with the great income inequality, the great gap that exists. But stabilizing, obviously, as we mentioned, housing is critical. It continues to be my priority each and every day. It is a number one issue that walks in through our door every day as we provide constituent services. And I've been incredibly strong defender of our public housing stock, will continue to do so. We cannot let the federal government or the city or the state walk away from our public housing residents, and that's critical. So those are the two issues that I will continue to tackle in the next four years and that I look forward to representing my constituents with great pride and dignity.
Thank you. Okay, let's do something a little different. Let's have a lightning round. Something like that. We probably don't have a whole lot of time. So rather than using up the full minute if you don't have to, just, you know, in 10 words or less, I'd like you to answer my question. Mr. Santos, we'll start with you and proceed to your right. Okay, here's the first question. Do you have a pet peeve about the city?
I think things aren't getting done fast enough. We have people in public housing who have issues with their homes and it's taking them years to get it done. We are getting money from people, sorry, we're giving money to organizations, but the city is taking too long for them to be able to get the money and actually do something with it.
Okay. Good answer. Ms. Mark Viverito.
My pet peeve has been this administration's disinvestment in key social services that are vital for families to succeed, eroding away our after-school programs, eroding away childcare slots. When you're creating an unstable situation for our families, you're making it difficult for them to live here, you're making it difficult for the New York City, New York City to thrive and be the wonderful melting pot that it has been historically. That's a pet peeve, social inequity, social injustice, and that's what I struggle each and every day to eradicate and to speak out against.
Thank you. Reverend Gardner.
Yeah, I have a pet peeve. When politicians say they're going to do something and don't follow through with it, I have a serious concern with that. It's fair for us to understand that we can't do everything for everybody, pretty much. But ultimately, if your word is out, and you ought to hold to that, you ought to do that, or at least do the best that you possibly can with it. And that's a concern of mine.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cardona, what's your pet peeve?
I have two. Biggest pet peeve is the disrespect of low-income communities because we're not poor, we're low-income. And also the disrespect of our seniors. I'm blessed enough to have my grandmother, who's my neighbor, who's 86, and my grandfather, who's 84. And they've done so much, those generations prior. We really need to take care of them.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Goodwin.
My pet peeve is, and actually, the reason why I'm running, is the hypocrisy of the current city council members. They speak about, they speak about being very progressive thinking, but in fact, under Melissa Mark Viverito, we rezoned the entire corridor of 125th Street, which is accelerating gentrification. We hear about all these progressive ideas, but at the end of the day, we keep getting served up to the 1%. The 99% continues to pay for the 1%. And even though we hear people talk about being progressive, when it comes down to the nuts and bolts of those things, they are not progressive. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that there's a finite amount of public schools and PS 109 should have been put back into the public school system, but it was under Melissa Mark Viverito and the city council that they voted to turn it into this 60 houses, 60 units of affordable housing. Now, that's all well and good if you, if you think that's really going to solve something, but we don't need 60 units, we need like 600,000. Public school space is finite. Once you lose that, it never comes into the system again. Once you lose that, it never comes into the system again. So I would, I would like to see more of our city council people really walking the walk and stopping, stop talking the talk. Because I've been disappointed over and over again over the last eight years, and that's why I feel nervous to let, really, any of the city council people become the mayor of this city.
Ms. Mark Viverito, I'm going to give you a chance to respond very briefly.
My record speaks for itself. I'm incredibly proud of the number of affordable units of housing. I'm a proud member of the Progressive Caucus that has brought living wage to New York City, that has brought paid sick leave to New York City, that has fought...
But the specific comments that Ms. Goodwin made about the rezoning of 125th Street...
I did vote for the rezoning. And I've taken total ownership of every single vote that I take. I'm extremely transparent in the way that I operate and the way that I am a leader in my community. I had extensive conversations when that process was going on. In the district, I had many, many forums in which I had people come. I would explain the process. And the two rezonings, I think them is going good when it might be confusing. So there's, they're separate matters. I'm extremely proud of my record. I'm extremely proud of every vote I've taken, and understanding that we are a collegial body, and that we work collectively with our colleagues on behalf of our constituents and on behalf of the city of New York. So again, there are going to be times when I make decisions that people may not be happy with, but that is part of leadership. You take tough decisions, you make tough choices. But I am very much always been open and transparent with every decision I've made, and allowed for opportunities for my constituents to give me feedback and for me to explain my position and my decision. That's the way I will continue to be a leader, and that's the way I will continue to be a council member.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have another quick question. These are so much fun. We'll start with Reverend Gardner this time, and proceed to Ms. Mark Viverito, and then to your left. Okay, this question. Will you support the winner of the primary on September 10?
Yes, I will.
Well, that's easy. Ms. Mark Viverito?
Yes, I will, because that will be me.
And if it isn't?
I am a Democrat, and I support Democrats.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Ms. Goodwin?
I'm a Democrat, and I'm not blind. I will not support somebody that is a Democrat that pushes Republican policies.
Thank you. Ms. Cardona?
I will also, because it will be me, too. I had to do it.
Okay. Let's try another one. And this time, who hasn't started? You've all had an opportunity to start. Let's go back to Ms. Cardona. You're going to get the first one, and then we're going to proceed to your right. I think we're making the camera people a little bit dizzy today, huh? Okay, this question. Do you support the use of the old voter lever machines for this election? Ms. Cardona?
I will say, I love the sound it made. I do miss that. I think it was easier for a lot of, I did hear a lot of complaints in, just because where I do live, it's a senior center, believe it or not, where we vote. So I did hear a lot of complaints from the seniors as far as the little filling in and things like that. Obviously, moving forward, I think we need to stay with the paper, but it just makes it easier on some of our seniors. So I think we need to, it would be helpful for them, or at least create something new. But we need to move forward into the 21st century and keep it digital.
Okay. Ms. Goodwin, what do you think?
I completely disagree. I think that computers are an imperfect system when it comes to voting. I think they can be hacked into, and I'm pretty sure they have been hacked into in some of these recent elections in the United States. So until we have a more perfected technology, then I would like to stay with the old-fashioned machines. I also think that the old-fashioned machines are much easier to use. I remember when I went down, that everyone was confused. Nobody could see. And this is not like good customer service. I think things should be easy-peasy. So that is not easy to me, and it discourages people from coming out. So let's just stay with machines. I think everybody knows how to use them.
Okay. Go back to those lever machines.
Yes.
Mr. Santos?
I think the lever machines are, again, easier for seniors, easier for people who have voted before. But I do believe that it's important that we move into a computerized system, because I think that's the future of where our voting should be. We'll make sure that things are faster, things will be done more efficiently, and I think that is also very important.
Okay. Ms. Mark Viverito? What do you think?
There's extreme concerns with the way that, and the machines that we have now, and whether or not, how they register. And we've seen the incredible dysfunction at the Board of Elections, which does not give voters much confidence in the way that these elections are being monitored or being overseen. I have concerns. I think that people, of course, like the way things are done, and any change is difficult. But I have seen and read, and we all know and experienced, the difficulties of the technology and the software and the hacking, and there have been a lot of problems along the way. So I think that I obviously believe that, yes, we have to continue on the path of trying to find an alternative way that is easier to vote, but it's a difficult question. And I think that I would like, until there is certainty with the way things are done, you know, sometimes you want to go back to the way things were, because there was more certainty in that and more assurance that votes were safeguarded. And I'm not sure that that's the case right now.
Okay. Reverend Gardner, what do you think?
There was a saying once, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." And obviously, the new system that we have is broken, and the old system is working. So until, perhaps, we can sort of tweak and modify it, where it will bring us into this, into this century where we are now, then it'll be fine. If not...
Go on back. Go on back to this.
That'll work, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we probably have time for one more question. So who hasn't started? Well, actually, I'm just being given the word that we don't. So we've covered an awful lot of ground today, and I want to thank you in advance of our closing for your very thoughtful remarks. We are going to start now, closing statements. You each will have a minute, and we're going to start with Ms. Mark Viverito.
Again, I want to thank Manhattan Neighborhood Network, and I want to thank legal women voters, and I want to thank those that are taking the time to watch this debate. I have been proud to serve District Eight for the past eight years. I look forward to earning your support, to continue working on behalf of the working families of this district and this city. With the new reconfigured district, I welcome representing Longwood, High Bridge, Mott Haven, of really working hard in partnership to continue to uphold the values that we hold dear, which is basically social equity, social justice, that every neighborhood, every constituent deserves to be respected, that every neighborhood deserves to be invested in, that the social services, which are critical to have our communities and to have our families succeed, is, are ones that I will continue to fight for. Improved quality of life in our public housing developments, more housing units and preservation of units, fighting for more childcare slots and after-school programs, and to continue to invest in our public schools. That's what matters. That's my record. That's what I've done, and I look forward to earning your support. Gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Well, I was a public school teacher in East Harlem at Center Park East, and I'm running for city council on the basic principle that all our young people deserve an excellent education and the potential to succeed. We have so many issues in our community. When I was teaching in East Harlem, I had students who never believed that they could do something, do something great, and go on to these amazing colleges. So I want to push for universal pre-K, so all children have this opportunity to succeed. I want to push for after-school programs and college readiness. You know, frankly, we have had eight years of a career politician who's putting their thoughts and career above the community. We can't have that. What we need is new leadership, a fresh new start. My name is Ed Santos, and I'm running for city council because I'm an educator. You've trusted me with your kids' education, and you can trust me with your vote for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Ms. Goodwin?
So I'm Gwen Goodwin, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Manhattan Neighborhood Network also for sponsoring this debate. I would like to say to the residents of East Harlem that the stakes are very high, that I know that I am 100% against the infill proposal. And I think that's really the only conversation, or one of the most important conversations that's happening in East Harlem, Mott Haven, and the Bronx, and throughout the city. And I will fight to preserve that. I will fight to not allow those high rises to be put in there. And I think that that is probably the most important issue for the residents that live in East Harlem right now. So I hope that they will come out to the polls on September the 10th, because the stakes are very high. I also want to say that should we lose this battle against the infill, that it's going to have an effect on rent-stabilized housing. It's also going to have an effect on rent control, because we've already seen what happens in East Harlem by allowing all of the new high rises to come in. All of the new luxury high rises, I should qualify, that have come in, have driven our rents up. I live in a rent-stabilized building, and as soon as we had all these new luxury buildings under, you know, the current administration's watch, while I come in and he ushered in, all of our rents started to go up significantly. So I think it's really important that the residents of East Harlem come out and know that as, as somebody who's been an activist for the last 28 years, who's lived in the neighborhood for the last 28 years, and seen things and had successes, that you can depend on me, that I am honest. You're going to know what I think, and that you should definitely, for your own sake, come out and vote for me.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Ms. Cardona?
Hi. Once again, thank you for taking the time to watch this program. I also want to thank my colleagues up here for taking the time. As mentioned before, I am born and raised in this community, still live here, and I'm proud of it. And we need to guarantee that we stay here. I know the big word is gentrification, and we're all afraid of that. I propose gentification. Let's make sure our people stay. Let's make sure our young people come back. Let's make sure we build it with those that have the roots and the heart and the spirit of what our community is. East Harlem and the South Bronx has a beautiful, lovely culture that needs to be built upon. I need, I want to bring back respect, respect for each other, respect for the constituents, respect for our elders.